We'll start with annual review revision of policies, first reading.
So as you know, there were, we subscribe to the Tennessee School Board Association's policy audit, and so they have just completed one, so there were several policies that they had recommendations for us to add. One of them was new. They're gonna get it from this. It'll feed through the same thing.
Okay.
So, the comparability of services was one that we previously did not have. There's a zero tolerance offense policy, administering medicines to students, and then a student wellness policy that we are recommending based on their feedback recommendations for changes. Answer any questions if you have questions about specific policies. I think I've spoken to all of the board members. One of the ones that Ms. Oof and I had a conversation on is, it seems that our legislature continues to add specific illnesses or disorders while ignoring others. And so, although we are required to put the specific in there, we don't have an issue with that, but we know that it does leave other factors. That would be something that we may also want to talk with our legislators about is, why are you singling out this one?
This particular disorder.
Why was this one made a priority?
The legislators decided that it was a...
There's probably legislative vessel in this school district.
Sure. Right. And, you know, we just want to make sure that our families understand, we take all
Yes.
of our students' health and safety seriously, not just ones with particular disorders, but everyone. I had a question, I think, on the councils. I think that's exciting, and I'm glad Mr. Fisher's gonna be heading that up. What, how often will the school level meetings occur? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
How often do the school level meetings occur?
So the school level, or healthy school teams, is what we call them, versus the advisory council?
Yes.
They meet quarterly.
Okay.
So per the requirement of the coordinated school health grant, the first meeting is to be in person, and then from then on, it can be digital. A lot of teams continue to meet every quarterly, every quarter, in person. So, right now, we have had one quarter. We have those notes and collections from those. Goals are set, where they are looking at any area of coordinated school health that could be a strength or weakness of the school during the school health index, and then develop plans on how they'll do that. So let's say, I don't know, they think staff wellness or exercises could be better presented at the school, so they'll focus in on that and work with me and other community partners to see if we can get after-school activities done at the school, or additional discounts, or things like that. And those are kind of fed back to me. We go from there. But yeah, four times a year, is the minimum.
How do you get parents, how do you recruit parents?
So, we have a list of mandatory members.
Right.
So I leave it up to the healthy school team leaders, which is, has to be a member of the school administration, and usually is appointed healthy school team member or volunteer. I would say appointed, but volunteered. A lot of times, that's your PE teacher or counselor, your most active person that has traditionally been doing it over the years. How parents are invited are left to the school. Most of the time, we do see those parents that are active PTO leaders coming in on that. A lot of them are sometimes digitally kind of put into the meetings because they can't quite make the at-school time meetings, but they're, the notes are transferred to and from, especially when we're collecting in-kind hours. That's a digital form that's sent and collected from PTO members, any type of community members, that the team deems necessary to work best in their school environment.
Great.
So each school has their own?
Mm-hmm. Each team, each school has their own, and then we work together with Healthy Germantown to kind of create that community, where we have anyone from the mayor's office to Parks and Rec, to Methodist, to local businesses, everything else put together. It's kind of getting a little weaker now that our grants kind of moved away a little bit, but we're building that back together now that we're transferring those responsibilities over to Parks and Rec. So Will and I are working close together to keep that strong, and currently we're working with Walk Across Tennessee, which is really active in our schools right now. So we have 33 classes and almost seven to eight hundred students involved in that right now.
That's great.
And so far, we are rocking it. It's probably gonna be the biggest year. Had to use more and rock it, but hey, when you're trying to get kids excited, that's what we're doing.
Hey, that works. Can I, can I, can I meet up with y'all at the halfway point?
You can. I mean, I got a whole list of fitness calculator and everything that's going on right now. So we're super excited. They'll be finishing up the final week of fall break, and then we'll see who our bragging rights trophy winner is at that time. And then we have a surprise guest. I won't say here, because I don't want surprises for the kids about who will be presenting that trophy.
That's great. That's awesome.
All right. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, any other questions on policy? Any, so let's go on to number two, textbook adoption selection committee.
So as you know, the state has a defined process of how we have to approve textbooks, and they have to have a waiver list to say that they don't have any vested interest in the textbook company or the selections that they choose. So you have before you the list that Mr. Gillespie and the academic team have gathered from the schools.
Any questions? Oh, I started to see some educators from the community on the list of community volunteers from other districts. Let's move on to that LEA compliance report.
So this is a report that we've done every year that we've been a district. It's changed formats this year, so it was actually a bubble form, but you know, this goes back to the TCA that certifies what a public school district has to do, which is when we talk about accountability, and I love to bring up vouchers and private schools, they should have a similar list that they get to complete and do, but know that we are certifying all of these things. So for each of those budget items, you know, there are things that we have to present, whether we're looking at our staffing, with our teacher-student ratios, or our textbook committee, or how the board approves fees. All those things have to be documented. Yes, we do those things.
And hopefully, in the next year or two to come, we can get virtual schools.
Yes, that's right. But there were two that were in a virtual schools being one of those.
Are there any questions about LEA compliance?
Never say never.
All right. Let's start with most budget amendments then.
Okay.
Oh my gosh. That every other page is wearing me off.
So as you are aware,
I did it from my phone, but I'm using my computer. You have to tell me.
We go through a very rigorous process, or I guess tedious is probably a more apropos word.
Thorough.
Thorough.
Process.
That Mr. Jones used to have.
When we, yes, when we have title funds and budgets presented. So I think minimally, this went through eight revisions, let's say I'm sure it was more than that, where we completed it, we sent the information, they send back the information to us and say, we think would be better if you put this in this category, this amount of money in this category, and they tell us some specifics on those. So the budget amendments that you see, a lot of those are due to those revisions coming back in those fundings. Ms. Oof, we spoke on the phone, and there were some questions, but I think it's good for the whole group to hear some of those questions.
Right. I was looking at number 12, actually.
Yes. So, on number 12.
Do you have ones for any?
For any nine, 10, 11?
Do you want to start at number, we can start at any number you need.
And also to let you know, these are carryover, carryovers are funds that were unspent from the prior year.
So specifically, one of the questions you had, Ms. Oof, was the eliminated contracted services was going away, and there was an increase in private agencies. And with, and I spoke to Ms. Huffman, she's sick, otherwise she would be here. So I hope she feels better. But this is just a recommendation from them about how we deal with service providers outside of the district. So for example, if we had a vision expert in the area that we needed to bring in to serve students with special needs, or a speech, OTPT, any of those extra service providers, this would be the line item where we would house those, and we would have a contract with them to serve students who come with those needs for us. So they just changed where they wanted that money allocated from. It was in contracted services, but they're saying now it's in private agencies. The private agencies are those providers, those services for us.
And then I was just curious about the $50,000 in the transportation.
Yes. So I spoke with Ms. Huffman. It's exciting. One of the things that you know we currently have is we have our special needs van that takes students around to work-based learning. It's not handicap accessible right now, so for those students, we're running that bus, and we're also using the Durham services, which we have to pay for that. So this would be used to get a handicap accessible vehi, smaller vehicle to take those students around to work-based learning.
That'd be like another van?
Yes. A smaller, smaller van for those students.
And then another question was on instructional supplies and materials was $101,000. I'm just curious, I don't have to know everything about it. Is there something on there that's a larger dollar volume that we're buying, and is it for a certain population of our students?
She said she does have a target in mind, but this isn't enough to cover all of it. She's looking for a differentiated leveled reading program for our special needs students. So that's what I was talking about with Representative White, they're to be helpful with the state to provide resources like that for our students, to pay for them. So she found one that was more than this amount, so that's the majority of it that she wants to spend it on. But they also tell us that there's a set aside for private schools, so know that for private schools that are serving students in our areas, they tell us a certain amount that we have to put in there for those schools too, so that's also included in that line item. And then the last question that you had, Ms. Oof, was on the instructional supplies for preschool. She said they moved that money around to other places in the special education budget, because we did receive a grant to pay for those special education preschool materials. So they felt comfortable using the grant for that, so.
Yeah, I think they received an additional $33,000.
But if there are other questions on budgets, we are glad to answer those questions.
Did you have any others? That was, that was all I had.
Nope.
All right, let's move on to miscellaneous budget amendment number 14.
Yes, so you are aware that we were concerned this past year. We weren't sure what it was going to take to open a, the new elementary school, and how many of our supplies and materials were we able to transition over from each of those schools, because we weren't sure whether, if you're moving half of a second grade over, what does that look like for the supplies and materials at that school? So know that at the end of the year, we did see a dramatic rollover of instructional funds that we feel appropriate now, because we know how much it's gonna run to provide a COLA stipend. And so, Ms. Landis, when we were talking, we think words are important, to say that this is a COLA stipend, because it's the equivalent of what a cost of living adjustment would be for the staff. But at this time, because it's not during our budget season, it's this one-time payment to employees. So very specific.
Non-recurring, one time.
Very, non-recurring, one time. So that's, yes, that's very important. And I think it'll also be important that if the board chooses to approve this, that we do a good promotional piece for our staff and employees, to explain to them that this is a cost of living stipend, adjustment stipend, that it's the equivalent, and that during the next budget season, this is something that the board's gonna be looking at in detail about how do we make sure that we're providing competitive benefits and salaries for all of our employees. So we will do some communication and talk about, I think it'll be a great benefit. As you saw in the piece that we prepared for you, we are in recruiting more for teachers and staff at our schools, and this would be helpful as the HR department goes out, because it would, you know, we're at number 10 right now for pay for teachers in the state, and this would push us up to be about number four, number five, depending on what the other districts do. So that's what this budget amendment highlights and accomplishes for us.
And the retention as well.
Yes.
Not the seeking future people as also, but I think it's important that this is gonna be really felt by the people that are already in.
Yes.
Any questions from Mr. Manuel?
I think one thing we talked about was, it's important this budget season that we look at different areas of school staffs, that there are, it's not just teachers we're competing for, but nurses and other areas that are.
Yes, paraprofessionals.
Paraprofessionals are hu, it's a huge thing. I would ask that we consider in January, the board and you meeting before budget season really gets a strong kickoff, and just kind of having a real discussion about what we expect to see in terms of improvements in that area, in order to make your job easier, and definitely the HR's, oh yeah, a lot easier. So I would just put that request out there.
Yes. And that's something that we had planned on, because we want to look at several factors. We want to look at the current job market in the area for positions that aren't necessarily educational, what's the going salaries. We want to look at what other municipals are paying. We want to look at the state. We want to look at job responsibilities. All those things need to be in. So my human resources department has already been tasked with that, because we knew that this, this time was coming, that this was going to be a research that we were going to do to provide to the board, to make sure that we are being progressive.
Right.
And make sure that, at the same time, we've moved conservatively as we've.
Well, yes, because we have to be good stewards of our money. We're not a, we're not a, we're not a private organization, so it is not our money.
Yes.
And we, and we have been, I mean, as we've mentioned before, that Dr. Mitchell said that we should be having 70 people onboard in the district office, and we're at 40. So since day one, we've been good stewards of our funds, and I think that now is probably a good time to look at, now that we're in our building, now.
How we grow.
I think it's a good time to look at all the pay, like you said, and look at what other districts are paying, and make sure we're in line.
And we've got some years of financial history.
Yes. We do have a good trend.
And maybe, you know, Ms. Price may have some perspective on some staff members she may need to look at in certain subject areas that may need more help. Or in HR, she may see some lax that, that now that we know, we can grow a little bit, and that's okay too.
And the easy one is we talk about lunchroom monitors. We can never fill those, because the salary that we're providing those, it's not anything that anyone will choose to do. So that is one of those areas that we've got to look at. What does the compensation look like in comparison to?
And this really is the time for you and your staff to put it together, so that you come to us at budget time.
Yes.
With your requests.
Yes.
That's the main thing that I think is important, that we talk about it in advance, so that we know, you know, once you all determine what that looks like and the needs, and identify them, that we can, you know, be looking where we can try to make that happen.
And it's the timing. We've talked about, we have been.
This past year, it was.
Chasing, since we've been a district, of how do we rezone, and how do we build a new school, how do we rezone again?
That big question mark of that building over there, and this one too.
And so now with a lot of those staffing issues, and looking at how can we serve students in the school, we do have that ability to now, broader.
All right, let's move on. No more questions? To number six, turnover audit.
So as you, you may or may not be aware, Board Policy 2.703 says that when we have an administrative change at the school, it's always beneficial to do an internal audit of that school, to make sure everything's in compliance. And with Ms. Price moving up to central office, and also she is pulling our financial secretary also to serve in her capacity at central, it's a good time to just look and see how things were operating there. And it's gonna help new administration and the financial secretary there to start off on a good foot, too, because we make sure that everything's the way it should be. So that's what we are requesting. It requires board approval to say yes, go ahead and do an audit of that school's funds, just to make sure everything's in compliance.
And we're doing it internally instead of powering CPA.
Did a similar audit occur when the changes occurred from Barrington to Forest Hill?
Well, it was a non-existing, oh yes, yes.
I'm talking about, yes, at his previous.
Right, yeah, it was done on June 30.
That's right, so we talked.
With the regular.
It was already, yes.
But that was because it was in, already in the.
The timing.
Right.
It was already in the works.
Any questions on that? Let's move on to number seven, Houston High School band room and concession stand additions.
Mr. Kathy, come up. This is exciting.
It is exciting.
Good evening. It's exciting to be in this new building, and it's exciting to be bringing the board another building, and it's really exciting, too, because this is gonna be one of our bigger investments in the arts, and the district has a strategic goal to make sure we are always looking at our arts and athletics facility. So we're really proud to bring this recommendation to the board. This is for, in addition to the band room, there's also circulation around the band room that was required by code, but also was requested by the stakeholders that use the space, so that they don't have to physically walk through each other's space to get to said space, if they have an interior space to do that. As far as the recommendation and what we're recommending, then I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are recommending, of course, the base bid for the band addition. The concession stand paddock was actually bid as an alternate, but we are recommending that work take place as well. That really will complete the vision of the four phases that we started with. The athletic fieldhouse is coming out of the ground. You guys approved the auditorium renovation at the last board meeting. So these are really the last two phases to complete that vision for those spaces, and with the beginning of the band addition, and repurposing that old band, I call it a storage shed, even though it could be used for a whole lot more than that, repurposing that space into a second concession stand, and an area that can also be used for multipurpose, tailgating, and other. That'll really complete the vision that was, that was set for. We're also recommending one of the addendums, which is additional parking on the east side of the band building. We thought that this was a good investment of dollars. It will help with parking in general. We need a whole lot more parking spaces in this, but it will give us additional parking spaces in that area. It will also give, assuming the board approves this this evening, it will give the construction company a spot for materials, lay down, and just a space to stage heavy equipment and machinery for the project. So we are not recommending the other, the other addendum, although the board is welcome to approve it. We just don't think that it's a good investment, and we're not, we don't think we're getting enough out of it for the dollars. That one came in at just over $172,000. We would gain 18 parking spaces, so we're not recommending that as a good, good use of funds. We really just bid that to see where it would come in. And it would be an improvement on the parking directly in the front of the building on, on the east side, but not for, we don't recommend it for $172,000.
The cost per space is ridiculous.
About how many spaces will we get with the other?
Alternate two.
Alternate two.
So with that alternate two, it will add 20 spaces to that area, and it will add some additional landscaping. It will also add some turn radius for the big band trailer to be able to get in and out and access that space. So there's multiple reasons why we're recommending that one, the cost, the turn radius, the construction, lay down, the additional parking.
Would this be considered faculty parking, or has that even been thought of?
We haven't discussed.
We haven't.
I was just curious if that's.
I think all in all, Houston High School has 650-plus parking spaces. I think about 120 to 130 of that are for staff, which leaves roughly 500, just barely over 500 for students. So it will open up, it'll open up more for students.
None for visitors.
It will, it will open up more for students, but.
It may not be right there.
I think everyone is aware of our need for additional.
Last Friday night, it would have been for the football game, or for the play, just depending on where you were, which way you were going.
Yeah, I was just wondering, there'd probably be some shift around, I guess.
There will be, and it will open up.
Since it's such so close to the building, it might be great as faculty parking.
Or they may make it to top desk aisle of students.
Or, that's true. Charge a little more than $75.
Preferred parking, yes, yes.
I'd have been riding with somebody. Any other questions? Now on to further business. Thank you, Mr. Kathy.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have any further business at this time?
I would like to bring up the topic again of a student board member. You know, it's been kicked around just in casual conversation, just in my brief time here, and I've had some folks ask me about it, and then I've also done a little digging what some other districts do. I know that we're kind of small, so we wouldn't probably have like four, or five, or six, or eight people, like some places. But I think that it's something that I would like to at least go through the process of examining, how possible that would be, or what that would look like for us with our single high school, probably then where the person would come from, and maybe what that might look like.
You don't mean board member, you mean more of an advisory member to the board?
Sure, they call it a student board, you know, yeah.
It wouldn't be a voting member.
That's where, that's where I was going.
Okay, yes.
It would be a non-voting.
Also, then, because that burns up the lead.
So it would be an advisor, I guess, a student advisor.
Right, but that participates with board function and some things.
Any comments? No, because I really hadn't thought about it.
I'll be glad to, and we can reach out to TSB. We go see a lot of TSB. We'll talk to Ms. Grissom to see how other school districts do it, how they structure it, what is their application. So I'll be glad if the board wants to do the research process to say, what does it look like for other districts in our state?
I will, that would be great. I will say that at the chairmanship training, we talked about it some, that was discussed amongst the chairman that were there. And there were a couple of districts that, I reached out to one, just because I was curious, and they, they said it's been wonderful. They have one person, one student, who is a member, and that he participates in, he or she participates in the discussion, but then, of course, is a non-voting member.
Right.
And that the selection, I asked primarily about, well, how do you choose this person? Is it like the student body votes for this person? And he said, he said, let me get back to you on that, because, you know, he wasn't sure about the specifics. And his reply was they, the principal has a process, and the principal selects that person. It is not an elected member.
Is that a district similar?
It is, I would say it's a more rural district.
Well, I mean, I think that you could go ahead and research and see what the options are. I think the principal does have a good pulse on who would be a good option.
Who would be, I think that would be the level.
And he did say that it's been interesting for him to see the different, sometimes it's an athlete, sometimes it's a band member, sometimes it's an orchestra person, sometimes it's a theater person. It just, the particular principal's done a good job of mixing that up, which I thought was exciting.
Sure. This would be a great time for us to do it.
Oh, right, sure, we're gonna have the folks.
And then we could, you know, talk about it.
And just see, I'm just curious, because I've read about it, and I mean, I know that it's an option, and it's not something we've ever talked about really directly, so I'm all about encouraging people to be part of it.
Yes.
Especially in our district or size.
And then I've had multiple emails about calendar. Or texts.
So it's, it's in the process.
Okay.
Ms. Price can give us that.
I've mentioned as well, yes.
So Mrs. Crowder and I have been working on a timeline, and we've already reached out to the schools to get their person who will be on the calendar committee. We'll have parents, so.
We have a, we, one parent.
One parent, one representative from each school, one admin from each school. We'll come up with some options for you all. We're hoping to have something to present in January. Yes?
January?
I'm just making sure it came, and I was on. The question we did have in the past, we've tried to do two years of calendars instead of just one, is that something that we want to pursue?
Do we have any comments, anyone?
Would you all like them to?
I would like to have two.
I liked having two years, but I think we came back and revised to the second year, didn't we, Linda?
I think we did.
So I, I'm a, I don't know. We did, we had to revise.
Not drastically.
No, it wasn't that drastic.
It wasn't drastic, but it was.
We did revise it. So yes, it's hard to say. Things do happen in the, in the year that could involve changes, but I think it is nice, two years, because people do want to make plans ahead.
I mean, it's tentative, and I think as long as you promote that it is tentative.
But the second, even though they've come up with one, there, it is open to possible changes.
I think that need, if we do the two-year, that that needs to be very thoroughly communicated.
None of them are really approved until April.
True. But, yes.
So we're gonna approve.
People that are from, we're trying to plan time off work and schedule travel, and things like that, yes. So it was that spring break, fall break kind of?
I just think it's a nice service to give the community that opportunity to.
Yes.
Plan ahead.
Plan ahead, absolutely.
We'll do that.
Thank you. Any other further business? We'll just stand adjourned until our meeting at 6:30. Airmark, snacks at the back.
Yes.
Thank you to Airmark.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Germantown Municipal School District Board of Education meeting, business meeting, to order. And I'd like to welcome you to our beautiful new district office, and our first meeting as a school board in our new district office. We are so happy to see all of you here. Unfortunately, Chairman Luter is unable to join us this evening, and she sends her apologies. Now let us have a moment of silence. Ms. Griffith, would you please introduce the young men that are here today? Ms. Griffith, would you please introduce the young men that are here today?
I would be honored. So tonight, we would like to welcome the gentlemen from Troop 270, Boy Scouts here in Germantown, Tennessee, that will also be presenting the colors tonight. Again, as Ms. Ove just said, our first meeting in our new space, we couldn't think of a better way for it to be started. We have Zachary Lorenz, Mr. Brody Davis, and also Will Turman, and they will present the colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think he's gonna tell us, but go ahead.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Color guard, present the colors. Color guard, halt. Color guard, post the colors. A pledge of allegiance.
To the good line of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Thank you, gentlemen. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to approve the agenda.
Second.
It has been, the motion has been made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Landers. Ms. Subramani, would you call roll?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is recognition and awards.
Hopefully, all of you are aware that we have started a new bullying prevention program in Germantown schools. It's an international model called the Olveus Bullying Program. It's really intensive. We had to send district staff there to actually train, and they were trained to become trainers. They brought the information and the system back to Germantown schools, and this past in-service day at all of our schools, all of our staff were trained on the Olveus Bullying Prevention Model. The teams at each of the schools also had to meet during the summer to plan and prepare for this. So this has been a really labor of love for our district. It's something that we think is going to help be proactive and really create a culture of kindness, and that's really our theme here tonight, when we look at the students that we want to honor, when we look at the teachers, and individuals, and administrators that we want to honor from our schools. So first, I would like to honor the staff from each of our schools that have really helped with this program and really helped roll this program out in our district. So we will call them up. When I call your name, if y'all all come up, and then we'll call the students up one by one. But once you come up here, you've got to stay, even staff. So first, I would like to recognize the staff who have really served for each of our schools, and of course, we have the trainers who are serving the whole district. So first is Mr. Jonathan Pritchett. I did not see Mr. Becker unless he slipped in. Mr. Rob Legault from Farmington. Brandy Fitzpatrick. Shannon Ward. Skylar Workman. And Diana Lang. And once again, these are really the leaders in our district that are helping each of our schools really create that culture of kindness and be proactive against bullying behavior. So we're excited for their role in the district. But now, we also reached out to the schools, and we said, which of those students, and we spoke to administration, the counselors, are really exemplifying what it means to promote that culture of kindness? In their actions with their peers, in their actions with the staff, how are they really being role models for Germantown schools? So we're excited to recognize some of those students in the district, because these are the ones who first came to mind of the staff that are trying to really promote this culture. So I'd like to read something about each one of the students. So when I say your name, if you would come up, we reached out to their parents, and we also reached out to the staff to really talk about, why do they exemplify this model? And why are they really helping promote that culture of kindness? So first, we have Lilia Zakira. Lilia has always demonstrated a sincere concern for the physical and emotional wellness of others. She loves to use her creativity to inspire and to be involved in passion projects that lift others around her. She is bright and talented, and she has a genuinely beautiful heart. We are so proud of the young lady that she is becoming, and she is a student at Dogwood. So Lilia, if you would come on up. Next, we have Jesse Carr, a student from Houston High School. Jesse has always put others before himself. His smile and kindness is infectious. Everything he does is at, does is done at 100%. We are thankful that Jesse is serving Houston High School and serving Germantown schools. If Jesse would come on up, please. Next, from Houston Middle School, we have Ella Croft. God has given Ella a heart of compassion. She is sensitive to the needs of others around her, and she has always been tender-hearted. We are thankful that Ella is part of Houston Middle School and part of Germantown schools. Ella, if you would come on up. Next, we have Cameron Boyd from Riverdale. One of our favorite things about Cameron is his love for helping others. He definitely has a servant heart. He spent many days visiting with people in nursing homes and volunteering at the Germantown Animal Shelter. He's also involved with the Best Buddies Program at Riverdale. Cameron makes excellent grades and plays baseball, football, basketball, and golf, but we are most proud of how he goes out of his way to include others who often get left out. Our proudest moments are when his teachers tell us what he did that day at school to help a friend with special needs, a new student, or someone who is alone. We are thankful that Cameron Boyd is part of Riverdale and part of Germantown schools. Cameron Byrd, sorry.
Here you go, Cameron. Thank you, Cameron.
Next, we have Leila Brown from Farmington Elementary School. Leila is a great student academically and has an equally great concern for those in her community. She often assists her teachers, works closely with students who learn differently, and makes care bags to pass out to the homeless. She typically puts others first and believes kindness is a key to a happy life. Once again, we are thankful that Leila is part of Farmington and part of Germantown schools. If Leila would come on up. And last but not least, we have from Forest Hill Elementary School, Molly Furman. Molly Furman is a noticer. As the fifth of five children, not much gets past her. With a keen sense of observation fueled by constant enthusiasm, Molly is always ready to share an idea or the seat next to her. She seems to make friends easily and thinks highly of those who look out for each other. These are things we hope take root in the core of her character. We're thankful that Molly is a student at Forest Hill and that she's a student in Germantown schools. Molly, if you would come on up, please. So once again, this is also special, because tomorrow is National Kindness Day, and I think you're supposed to wear a cardigan in honor of Mr. Rogers. We think that this is a special recognition of students, because as you know, success is not just measured in test scores or standardized tests, it's about the people that they're becoming and how they're going to be citizens that serve their community. So we're thankful that they're part of our schools. So at this time, we're going to go step out into the lobby so that we can get some pictures with the school board. So if we'll go out there, don't slip out yet, but after that, feel free that if you want to leave, you are not beholden to stay for the meeting. You can go ahead and go after we take pictures. Thank you.
So I'll call us back in order. Next on the agenda are our reports. Ms. Griffith, if you would, please give us the TLN update.
Germantown School Board members and Superintendent Manuel have scheduled and will be scheduling appointments with our local state legislators. We actually met with House Committee, Education Committee Chair Mark White earlier this afternoon. A few primary topics discussed were regarding legislation about the future of ten-ready testing, student discipline procedures, graduate requirements, and alternative school offerings. School Board, TSBA, the Tennessee School Board Association, has announced that their annual day on the hill will actually be a little different in 2020. It's going to be a legal and legislative institute. This event will continue focusing on changing laws and pending legislation as we prepare for the next General Assembly session. I'll be participating in a legal lunch webinar next week that is going to be covering education case law, and I wanted to take a moment to point out a couple of things coming off of yesterday's wonderful Veterans Day programs at all of our schools, that our governor, Governor Lee, has really put a lot of emphasis in civics and adding some additional citizenship and civics-type curriculum at the high school level, and also working on really putting an emphasis and focus on that in our lower schools. And I think that's a very positive thing, and I'm proud and pleased of that, and I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that that was coming, because you'll be seeing more of that.
Thank you. Now for the chairman's report. Before I get started on that, I would like to say Citizens to Be Heard is coming up. If you are interested in addressing the board, there is a form to complete, and then please submit that form to Ms. Subramani here at the front. Thank you. From Veterans Day events, book fairs, Riverdale's 50th celebration, Falcon Fest, band concerts, orchestra events, athletic events, and theatrical performances, both already happened and happening, it's been a busy month for our district. And we, as a board, have tried to participate in as many of them as we possibly can, and we enjoy every single one of them. So we'd like to thank you, thank you students, thank you parents, thank you staff, thank you PTOs for facilitating these events, for making them the wonderful things that they are, both for the community and for our children, and thank you for allowing us to take a part. And that's my report. Mr. Jones, would you like to give us the financial report?
Sure, you have the financial reports for the month ending October 31st, 2019. First, on the balance sheet, in the school operating fund, total assets, liabilities, and fund balance reporting at just over 16 million. In the federal projects fund, we have a reimbursement due from the Tennessee Department of Education at approximately 271,000. Total assets, liabilities, and fund balance, and the following funds include, the cafeteria fund, 238,000, capital projects, 2.6 million, health insurance, 1.9 million, the OPEP Trust, 2.8 million, and our general fixed asset account group for our buildings, land, and equipment, right at 106 million. And just a couple comments on the statement of revenues and expenditures. In the school operating fund, our targeted percentages for expenditures are, in the administrative or support categories, 34%, instructional categories, 25%, and for total expenditures in the fund, overall, we are at 26% of the total budget expended. In the health insurance fund, the October claims dropped off a little bit, totaling $315,000 compared to the monthly budget of 375,000. And finally, in the OPEP Trust, we reported a 37,000 unrealized gain on investments in that portfolio. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Manuel.
So yes, we have moved into the new central office, and all of the work is not done yet. So this is a temporary TV, there will be large ones on the side for audience so that we can see. But I did want to give an update on some of the achievements that we've seen in the district. So first, as you're aware, the results from the state ACT have come out, and for the fifth year in the row, Germantown schools had the highest district ACT average, and we recorded an average of 26.3 for our ACT scores. That's impressive. We have put the pieces in place for students to be successful. This is really successful. This is really a comprehensive measure of what they've done throughout their education career. So their elementary school, their middle school teachers, all the staff who have really helped them accomplish this is something special. But every cohort's different, but we are excited. What's special is also the growth that you've seen throughout the years. So we've moved from a 24.1 and 16 to a 26.3, but also, it's how the students are performing. We don't have some students that are scoring really high, and they're pulling up the average for other students who are scoring low. We like to look at the percentage of students who are scoring over a 21 on the ACT, and the college board says that's the college readiness benchmark. That means that you're going to be successful in college. And we've moved from 74.4% of our students who are scoring over a 21 on the ACT to over 86.2% of students scoring over a 21 on the ACT. This is special. And also with the ACT, this was a state record. It was the highest district ACT that's ever been recorded, so we're proud of our accomplishments. And two, we're testing everybody. There are 149 districts in the state of Tennessee, and only 34 of those had 100% of their students tested. So not only do we have high scores, but we're also testing all the students at Houston High School. Other things that we like to talk about, there's not a silver bullet for ACT. It really is exposure to rigorous coursework throughout their career. So people are always looking at, what tutoring can I get? What study guides can I get? What program can I be in? It's, are you challenging yourself every day in your courses in K through 12? So it's really, how hard have you worked all along? One of the ways that you can do that is by enrolling in AP classes, and we're proud that we offer 26 advanced placement courses at Houston High School. So when we talk about, what's the measure for students being successful, it's enrollment in these rigorous courses, and honors courses. And it's, they used to have a really rigorous process to get into those AP courses. We've removed those guidelines. All students should attempt to try these AP courses, because even if you're struggling and not as successful in those courses, you're going to be more successful when you move on to college, and that's going to help you perform well on the ACT. So other things that you can see, we've added some dual enrollment courses at Houston High School. That means you're getting college credit. So AP courses, at the end of the course, you take a test, and if you score three, four, or five, most colleges and universities will give you college credit for that. There are other options that you can take at the high school, too. You're actually enrolled in a college course while you're at the high school, and so the teachers actually work with the universities to make sure that you get college credit. So when you get ready to apply for those colleges, you actually take that credit with you, you actually have a transcript from the university when you get ready to apply. So you can see, we have over 18 dual enrollment courses at Houston High School. So you can see, we have over 18 dual enrollment courses at Houston High School, another way to prepare students for success in college and career. Since we have been formed as a district, we know that everybody's path may not be college. We purposely say college and career. So we have added over 29 CTE courses at the high school, and CTE stands for college technical courses. So are these students, or career technical courses, are these students getting prepared for careers in fields beyond maybe a four-year degree? Maybe they're interested in a two-year degree. So you can see, the one that we've added this past year is a clinical internship, and this is part of our health science curriculum. They're actually working with hospitals, doing shadowing, so it's a really enriched experience for those individuals, and they're getting college credit for that. So it's a really special experience. But what do we serve overall? We've added 29. At Houston High School, we have over 53 career technical education courses. So it's a really special opportunity for students, so we try to provide something for everyone. But you can see, there's a picture from the course catalog of all the clusters we have, and we have 13 of the 16 clusters that are offered in the state with CTE courses. So we are proud of our achievement. That doesn't mean that we live and work for ACT scores, but it is something that we do like to acknowledge when we've been successful, but know that we're trying to provide opportunities for all students regardless of where their future may take them. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Manuel. Next is Citizens to Be Heard. Ms. Subramani, do we have any citizens today?
No.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. A motion was made by Ms. Landers and seconded by Ms. Griffith to approve the consent agenda. Included in the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes, an annual review and revision of policies second reading, annual review and revision of policies first reading, textbook adoption selection committee, and the LEA compliance report. And finally, miscellaneous GMSD fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendments nine through 13. Ms. Subramani, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher? Ms. Fisher? Ms. Soff?
Yes, thank you. And next are the board action items. The first action item is miscellaneous GMSD fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendment number 14.
So one of the things, challenges that we had as a district is we were opening Forest Hill Elementary School. We weren't sure of the costs that were going to be associated with that as far as instructional supplies and materials. We knew that we have students moving from Riverdale, from Farmington and Dogwood to Forest Hill. We weren't sure how many textbook sets we were going to have to order. We weren't sure how many supplies we were going to have to have for that school. We were happy that we were able to be conservative fiscally and not have to spend a lot of money buying new supplies. We were able to use a lot of those materials that we moved there, textbooks and supplies. And so we ended the year with over a million dollars transferring over from our instructional fees. One of the things that we have talked about as a board is being competitive, and we have a strategic plan goal, and it's in our old plan, it's also in our new plan, to recruit, develop, and retain exemplary staff. And one of the ways that we do that is through compensation. And so what we've talked about with our staff is being competitive with our neighbors and also being competitive in the state. And at this time, we're really sitting at about number 10 in the state for starting salary for teachers, and we always want to be competitive with our other municipalities and our other neighbors, because as we start our recruiting season coming here soon, and Ms. Stratton goes out to colleges and universities, that's one of the things that our employees are care about. We have an incredible benefits package, but it's really hard to explain, oh, yes, but our health insurance is so good, and we haven't seen an increase in five years. So compensation goes a long way to recruiting those staff and also to retain the staff that we have and show them that we appreciate the work that we're doing. So this budget amendment is the equivalent of a COLA stipend. It's a COLA stipend that we would see for this year. It's equivalent to a 2% increase on all staff throughout the district. At this time, it's a stipend because we're not in the budget season, so this is a non-recurring budget amendment we have. We're using the funds that were rolled over from last season. So the employees would see it in a one check either December or January of this year. We've got to look at the processing, probably more likely January of this year, that they would receive this COLA stipend. This has been a priority for us. We knew that building Forest Hill was going to be a challenge, and we knew that going into next budget year, this is something that we want to discuss as a board, making permanent. That's our objective, but we have to make sure that we move conservatively, and we have the funds to do that, and we're strategic in how we provide this COLA stipend across the district. So we want to formalize that going forward in the next budget seasons, if at all possible, but that will be a board decision as we go through the budget process. So at this time, it is our recommendation to have budget amendment 14 that would provide that COLA stipend to all of our staff in our schools.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the GMSD FY 2019-20 budget amendment number 14.
Second.
Motion made, excuse me, motion made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Landers. Is there discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
I believe our COLA stipend is a great way to recognize and thank our GMSD staff, from our front desk to our plant managers, to our paraprofessionals, to our administrators, our district office staff. They all play a role in the success of our district. As the superintendent mentioned, one of our strategic plan goals is to recruit, retain, develop, and retain our staff, and I think this is a good way to support that goal. I also, we hold our staff to high standards here. We put them through professional development, and I think that, at this time, we have the financial means, and I think we should recognize our staff with a cost of living stipend.
Any other discussion?
To Mr. Manuel's point about this being a non-recurring, I do think the fact that the funds are there is really important. I think that the people, as Ms. Fisher just stated, that have put in and done and above and beyond, based on everything we just talked about in the superintendent's report, that didn't happen without the people, right? So I think recognizing that is super important. I also think recognizing what the future looks like as we are growing and evolving. We talked about in the work session how there may be some voids that we would like to see departmentally identified, that we might fill positions or pursue certain staff that maybe we feel like we need, and whether it be academics or whether it be in HR. And I think that as we look ahead for the budget season coming up in 2020, that we really get some feedback from the district staff, because ultimately, when we talked about it individually with the superintendent, there are the teachers, the instructional staff, that is really, really an important base that we are looking at, trying to increase where they are as they come in and increase where they are after they get here. I think that that's really, really important, that we're not talking just about teachers. We're talking about our entire district, and I think that as we move into next year, we really look at what that, how we can set that apart. Mr. Manuel made a great point. Compensation is a big part of why people go to work somewhere, and culture is a big part of that. Benefits do certainly play a factor into that, and I want to continue to be highly competitive in the employees that we bring in, and we, like we say, we want to continue to develop and also keep them around, retain a long time. That's kind of the point. I'm seeing Ms. Stratton doing a lot of nodding, because that's exactly what she's trying to do in her department, and I think that it's really important that we do, though, have those conversations. And in the work session, we did ask that we, as a group, all kind of look ahead and try. We're at a really special place. Like Mr. Manuel also said, we just came off of a very unusual financial situation opening a new school. There was a lot of question mark as to what that would look like, and we're fortunate that some of the things we set aside, certain amounts of money for, we didn't have to spend all of those funds. So that goes back to being good stewards, and that's something we want to continue to do, though. So I think that we really just want to look at this as an opportunity to show appreciation and also acknowledge, and I think that that's really, really important, that we all feel that that is important collectively as a group. So I get that impression, and I want to make sure that the staff feels that way and understands that's where we're coming from, but that in the future, you know, we don't know what the future holds until we identify those needs and what that funding looks like. So hopefully, it will be something we can grow on after this, but those discussions won't be until next year. But at this time, I appreciate all the work that's gone into explaining some of the questions that we've had as a board.
Ms. Landers, do you need? Ms. Subramani, would you mind calling roll? Thank you.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Soff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on board action items is the turnover audit. Mr. Manuel?
In accordance with policy 2.703 audits, when we have an administrative change at the school, it's always required that we do an audit of that school, and so this motion actually gives us the authority to do that audit at Dogwood, because we are excited that Ms. Price is moving up to the central office, so we're going to be doing an audit of Dogwood Elementary School, and that's the recommendation by the district.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Mona Kinley, School Accounting Specialist, to perform a turnover audit at Dogwood Elementary School.
Second.
Was a motion made by Ms. Landers, seconded by Ms. Fisher? Is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Subramani, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Soff?
Yes.
Thank you.
The final item in board action items is the Houston High School Bandroom and Concession Stand additions. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, we are excited that we are really finishing a four-pronged improvement project at Houston High School, and this was made up through public dollars, through private dollars, a partnership with the city, and so we're excited that we have a bid document to complete that process. Of course, there are more things that we want to do, more renovations that we want to do specifically around the auditorium, but these are our first real steps that we've done. Hopefully, as the public is aware, we have done a fieldhouse project at Houston High School. We are also taking a storage unit that was also being used for multiple purposes and putting a brick-and-mortar building on the side of the band addition that they can use for storage. They can use for small groups to practice, whether it's the percussion group or winds group, they can practice in that space. It also provides for us to take the old storage building there and turn it into a pavilion area and a new food court there for the football games. There's more area for people to congregate, more movement around the facility there. It also adds additional parking, 20 parking places on the side of the building, and I know that's just a drop in the bucket of what we need at Houston High School, but we thought it was something that we could fit into this project. It also allows for staging of materials as they're working on the band addition project. Mr. Kathy, if there's anything else you'd like to add about this process or the bidding process, I'll turn it over to you.
Just, we're excited to do these projects, and our master facilities plan, we talk about priority one, priority two, and priority three projects. For six years, we've been focusing on mainly priority one projects, which is, those are the projects that keep the buildings going, roofs, HVAC units, and while necessary, they are not always the most exciting projects. It's really exciting to be able to start to knock out some of these priority three projects that are really going to improve the quality of our campuses that our students enjoy and our parents enjoy and our community enjoys. So we are very excited, as this athletic fieldhouse starts to come out of the ground, to be doing some of these projects with auditorium renovations, going to improve the quality of the auditorium. And now the recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight is to recommend Grinder Tabor Grinder. They were the lowest and best bidder. We had base bid for the band addition, as well as alternate one for the work around the concession stand and a whole lot of site work on the west side of the campus, and then, as Mr. Manuel mentioned, bid alternate number two for the parking lot addition on the east side of the band addition. So we're excited to bring that recommendation to you this evening.
And I'll also add that the renovations we're talking about in the auditorium, we've already done a sound package upgrade at Houston High School. As you know, we had flooding there, too, so we already have new carpet in that facility due to the flooding. This provides a light package, and it's all the lights. It's not only the theatrical lights there that are LED and programmable lights that we have there, but it's also flooring for the stage. That's dance-quality flooring, and it's something that's in dire need there. It also improves the structure underneath that, so we can actually have a lift that we can bring onto the stage, that we can do a lot more opportunities and really start producing some of those Broadway caliber productions. We already do them, but with the lights and the sound that those students deserve.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve an award bid, GMSD FY 2020-02, for Houston High School Bandroom and Concession Stand additions in the amount of $2,159,221.66 to Grinder Tabor Grinder.
Second. Motion was made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Griffith. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Kathy for getting this process going. As with all of our projects, it seems time is always not on our side. I don't know why that is, other than construction 101, that's how it goes. But in this case, when we met a couple of weeks ago, and we were able to kind of get this ball rolling, I really appreciate you getting it all together so that it could get on its way.
Any other discussion?
I'll just also want to thank Mr. Kathy for his hard work and Aaron Law for his hard work getting this bid package together. Ultimately, when this started, and this was a couple of years ago, the board saw this as an amazing opportunity for partnership. And I think when you talk about the different levels of capital improvement, when you look at those Level III projects, partnership is going to be necessary, and so this is a shining example of what can get done when we have generous donors, a wonderful community, and a city willing to help step up and help us out to make something special for our students. And I'm very, very thankful for all of the partners in that project. So as we get started on this, I just want to express my gratitude in this time of Thanksgiving for these people who came together and made this happen. So I look forward to seeing the end result. So since there's no more discussion, Ms. Subramani, would you call roll?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Soff?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're at announcements. Have a few announcements for what's going on with the board the next month. We leave Thursday or Friday this week for the TSBA Annual Convention in Nashville, and we'll be spending several days developing our leadership and learning about educational strategies across the state. Looking forward to spending time with some of these ladies and having a good time up there. Thanksgiving holiday is November 28th. Our next board meeting is Monday, December 9th, in this boardroom in the district office. Our holiday parade is Saturday, December 14th, I believe, at 2:00. And then I also want to extend an invitation to the community. It is starting to be the holiday season. We have so many student groups who are doing performances of all kinds throughout the district. Please check them out. These kids have worked so hard, and the teachers and staff have worked so hard to make them outstanding. So if you have the opportunity to go listen to some orchestra holiday music or the choir sing, or check out Frozen Junior this week, take that opportunity. It's an amazing, amazing thing to see these talented kiddos at work. Any other announcements for anyone else? All right. This meeting is adjourned.